...at night.
Oh, yeah. Where'd you get?
Upper Michigan.
We will now call the April meeting of the county commissioners to order. Want to thank each of you for being here. We have a big night tonight and want to call on Pastor, to start, call on Pastor Wesley Sink from Hardison United Methodist Church to lead us in invocation.
Thank you, sir. So I'm the pastor at Hardison Methodist, just down the road, and honored to be here with you. And we'll pray, but before we pray, I just want to read one verse and just say a quick word. Be respectful of your time, it won't be long, but I'll just say a quick word about it. So Psalm 73, verse 28 says this, "But for me it's good to be near God." Just as simple as that. The psalmist drills right down to it and says, "For me it's good to be near God." My wife and I, just recently, last month, got an opportunity to go to the Holy Land. We visited Israel and we visited every spot, man, from top to bottom and side to side. And we walked Capernaum and Galilee and Nazareth and, of course, Jerusalem. And what struck me right off was how unimpressive the land was. Now, that sounds odd, right? But I remember visiting Yosemite in my early twenties and coming out with a cramped neck and a sore jaw from my jaw being dropped at how impressive the land was. This land that we visited in Israel, the Holy Land, there wasn't a postcard moment. It wasn't just drop-dead gorgeous, but it was holy. And why was it holy? Because it was the land where God had begun a relationship with his people. It was the land where Jesus Christ had walked. And so as we walked where Jesus had walked and stood, where God had started a relationship with folks, it reminded us that holy ground is where God is. And if you're a believer in Christ, you know you don't have to visit Israel to be on holy ground. You don't have to be in Jerusalem to be where Jesus is. And I would echo the statement that the psalmist said, "For me it's good to be near God." And as we come into meetings like this and as we plan for the future of our county, it's good to remember that if we want to continue that relationship as God's holy people and as we want to continue to be on holy ground, we have a decision to make every day. Do we want to ask God's blessing but not invite Him in? Or do we want to invite Him in and live on the ground of a relationship with Him? Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we come before you today, we ask that we would consider this a special time at a special place because we ask for your presence to be here with us. Father, we would ask that you would guide our hearts and our minds, that you would bind us together as family under one head, that you would lead and guide every step. Father, not just tonight, but as we step forward and as we move forward as united people, we would ask that overwhelmingly, we would live as your children, that you would call our hearts to action through your word, through your relationship with us, and through your work deep within our hearts. Father, for the families in this county and in this city, Lord, for the hearts, for the folks who wake up each day and go to work, for the folks who work hard in this county, whether they get a paycheck or not, Father, we ask that you would bless us as we move forward seeking your will. We would ask that you would make that clear to us. We would ask that you would not leave us or forsake us, but that you would hold us tight as we step forward in you. And, Lord, we ask these things boldly, as you told us to approach the throne of grace with confidence. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Leading us in the pledge tonight is going to be the Civil Air Patrol from Sugar Valley Composite Squadron, led by Captain Sandra Smith. Just a little bit about the color guard. Cadet First Lieutenant Andrew Ellis is a senior at North Carolina Leadership Academy. After graduation, Cadet Ellis is going to West Point to become an infantry officer. Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Isaiah Soto, Color Guard Commander in Cadet Squadron, First Sergeant. Cadet Soto has homeschooled a high school senior who is looking to attend college to achieve his dream of becoming a pilot. Cadet Master Sergeant Eliza Martinez is Cadet Public Affairs NCO and Cadet Recruitment and Retention NCO. Cadet Martinez is currently a homeschool junior, working on her bachelor's degree in physical therapy at Davidson-Davy Community College and plans to transfer to Wingate University to complete her education. Cadet Staff Sergeant Addison Hamilton is a Cadet Element Leader. Cadet Hamilton is homeschooled and is a high school sophomore who plans to join the Air Force and has a passion for emergency services and aviation. And Captain Smith, you're now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Captain, did you want to say anything about the... Did you have any?
You said it all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next, our Ethics and Conflict Disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86, the Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December 2, 2019, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual perceived or potential conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda, which will come before the board tonight for our vote. If so, please speak up and let the board know before the agenda's adopted. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Before we move on, I did want to say this in a matter of prayer request and let you know that Commissioner Poindexter is not here tonight because he is under the weather. So we'd ask you that you pray for him and get him back to us next month. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second? Mr. Schoff, any other discussion? All in favor? Uplifted hand? It's unanimous. Public comment, Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, we have one individual who's signed up, Julie Whitaker, Topic Discussions, Davie County Mental Health website. So Ms. Whitaker, you've spoken many times before. I'll not go over the rules with you, and you've already approached the podium. If you'd just state your name.
Thank you, Julie Whitaker. Ladies and gentlemen, I come before you tonight because I have some good news to share with you. I'm pretty proud of it. Through collaboration with the Davie County Consolidated Health and Human Services and with the assistance of IT Department's Tiffany Marlowe, the Davie County NC website now has a link and a new webpage about mental health resources. Thank you. Thank you. I hope that you will all take the opportunity. All you have to do is go right to your own webpage and look right there. There's a little brain. And when you touch it, it will take you to a page that has information, a document that is essential for persons facing a crisis with mental illness, tells them exactly what they need to do to find the resources that will help them in their situation. And then there's a Resources tab with the resources that were developed by the Community Foundation in the Pearls of Empowerment, and another list of resources of places they can go to find more information and help. And there's a tab with articles of interest that have been published in the Davie Enterprise that they can go back and refer to. We're trying to get our hands on a few more of those articles. But I hope that you all will share with everybody you meet that has a mental health concern that that resource is now available to them. And I assure you that we are going to do everything in our power to make sure that it stays up to date, the links are accurate and correct, and people can use it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Julie. Next, Gims Awards. Barnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to continue on our course of good news tonight. Tonight, as you all know, the county, we don't really do an Employee of the Month, but we do it twice a year with our Gims program. And we have five of our six employees here tonight. We have one who was out of town that could not make it. But I want to first, want to give thanks to our Gims Committee. We have a group of employees that work with pairs to put together, to review all the nominees and to select the employees. And I want to thank Suzanne Wright, Melissa Parker, Heather Kraus, Robin Vogler, and Andy Atwood. They were members of the committee that really got us to this point by reviewing the applications. And the purpose of the Gims, the Davie County's Gims Program, is designed to recognize and reward county employees for excellence in service consistent with the I Pledge value statement. This program allows staff to submit nominations of their peers for recognition and a monetary award for going the extra mile. The categories from the I Pledge are for innovation, professionalism, leadership, empowerment, duty and service, gratitude, and excellence. We do ask that after we recognize each individual employee tonight, that you stick around for a minute so that we can get a photo of you together. And I know some of you may have family here. We'd like to get them in the picture as well. As part of Gims, each employee receives, I believe, $250 as a reward for going the extra mile. And that's a true 250. We make sure to gross it up to make sure that's the amount that they actually do take home. So tonight, our first Gims Award, and typically, we do ask you as commissioners, if you will come down front with our recipients, so you can be part of the photo as well. So our first recipient tonight, unfortunately, Mike Linville, who works in our public utilities as a water treatment plant operator three, was unable to attend, but we did go out to the plant in Kool-Aid to make sure he received this award. Mr. Linville has been a dedicated member of the water treatment plant staff for over 16 years, starting out at the Sparks Road Water Treatment Plant before volunteering to be relocated to the Kool-Aid Water Treatment Plant when they were short-staffed and needed assistance. Mr. Linville has dedicated his career to his fellow operators, our department, the county, and all its public dedicated, public utility customers. He has gone above and beyond and has, in his expected duties, sacrificed his personal time to ensure that the demand of our water system is met. Mr. Linville has gone as far as to stay at the facility overnight and sometimes 48 hours in a row when severe weather was impacting the county, monitoring the system and operating the plant to ensure the safety of the customer, citizens, and his fellow employees are met. Mike also holds the highest state-level certifications for water treatment plant operations. Mr. Linville is candidate for all of the I Pledge statement, but the duty and service he has performed over his career in Davie County makes him stand out and empowers us to go, for all of us to go the extra mile. So let's give a round of applause for Mike. So our first in-house tonight is Lieutenant Daniel Moxley with the Sheriff's Office. As he comes up, I'll read this. On 1/21/2013, Lieutenant Moxley went and spoke with a family, a man, woman, and two children, in front of the Dollar General that was begging for money. They stated they needed gas, money, and other items before heading back home, and they'd already been given $20 from people walking out of the store. Lieutenant Moxley told them to keep their money and follow them to the gas station where he paid for their gas so they could finish their errands and get back home. All right. Next is Krista Ramrup, who was an Assistant Director of Human and Health Services. She's in the Adult and Protective Services Division. She also does a fabulous job of letting county managers shadow her for the day. Deputy Director Ramrup stayed overnight with an ADD special needs adult at a local motel in Moxville. There was no shelter for adults, so Deputy Director Ramrup got permission for a motel room for the client and another staff member, Charlene P., to stay with the client who could not stay alone by themselves. Deputy Director Ramrup always goes the extra mile to help all of her staff and is very supportive of her staff's and client's needs. Next, we actually have a two-for-one here. It's actually a two-two-for-one. We have Deputy Benjamin Simpson and Deputy Christopher Gaddy with the Sheriff's Office. In December 2022, Deputy Gaddy and Deputy Simpson were interacting with a female known to have mental health issues, and she had been trespassed from several locations where she had been staying. Due to the cold weather and being unable to obtain temporary housing for the female for the night, the two deputies took it upon themselves to pay for her to get a hotel room for the night so she could find housing the next day. Okay. Don't clap yet. Then, on 1/12/2013, Deputy Simpson and Deputy Gaddy learned of a medical call where they were close to involving a suspect that had passed out and had lacerations to the subject's head from a fall. Both deputies responded and located a male subject that had been bleeding and not breathing and had no detectable pulse. The two deputies immediately began life-saving efforts via a bag, valve, mask, and chest compressions. They continued providing aid until medical personnel arrived on the scene. By the time the male was loaded into the ambulance, he had regained a pulse and was attempting to breathe on his own. The deputies would not have been dispatched to the call per protocol for EMS, but went to assist due to their proximity. And then, last but not least, Lisa Thompson? Thomas, sorry. My apologies. Lisa is our Community Paramedic Coordinator with EMS. Community paramedics spend every day in the field administering to homebound residents and assisting with opioid crisis in our county. But there are some occasions where Community Paramedic Lisa Thomas has gone the extra mile to help fellow employees. One incident involved an employee that had emergency surgery on his arm due to a worker's comp injury. He came home with instructions to change his dressing and administer special medication to the incision. However, he was one-handed, which proved to be an impossible task. Living alone, he called Lisa, he called the worker's comp administrator for guidance, who called multiple resources around the county, but because it was a worker's comp claim and no home health orders were given, no one was able to assist. Knowing the limitations with the open wound advantage, our employee reached out to Lisa and the community paramedics. With professionalism, caring heart, and a smile, Lisa was able to administer the medication and dress the wound. Then, recently, another employee expecting a baby started feeling bad at work and had reached out to her OB-GYN. While waiting, she asked if she could locate a blood pressure cuff, but she did not feel she needed to call 911. The employee made several phone calls to her paramedic friends, but later learned that all units and staff were tied up on other calls, so she reached out to Lisa, who was arriving back at Station 1, but immediately turned around and came to her office. I believe this situation occurred in this building. Lisa looked her up and immediately kept checking on her vitals until the physician's office called back. Lisa was very professional, asking all the right questions of the patient, noting observations, and sharing those observations and vitals to the physician. Lisa continued to reassure the mother, but strongly encouraged that she proceed to the hospital to be checked out. Lisa also has an employee that goes above and beyond on the administrative side as she builds the community paramedic program. Lisa became aware of a grant for a community paramedic program on July 21 and the due date of August 2. She went right to work weeding through the very intensive grant application, gathering letters of support from the community, and with less than two weeks to complete a winning application. Then Lisa fell ill to COVID, and even with COVID, she was able, she still remained amazing. And as bad as she felt, she kept pressing on, writing section after section of the proposal and sending it for review. Because of her persistence, she pulled every section together. The grant was submitted with three hours to spare, and the community paramedic received a whopping $350,000 in grant funding. That's it. If we could get everybody up here for a picture.
All right. Next item, Aging Services Planning Committee update. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. And I just have to say, I'm so proud to live in a county that acknowledges our local heroes. That was, who knew? Who knew what we all do? So my name is Allison Brown, and I wear two hats for Davie County. And the first one is the area, Davie County Aging Services Planning Committee. I worked for the COG, the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, for about five years. And as soon as I left there, I wanted to be on that committee. I had been facilitating it for all that time. And per our bylaws, we're supposed to give you an update every year. And some of you have been around since the last time I made an update, but it's been a while. So that will be the first part. And then the other hat that I wear for you is I am your delegate to the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and I want to tell you what we've been up to. And I've put handouts around about our five legislative priorities that I really want to give you all an update. I think you'll find this information interesting. So you've got the power, right? Like to click? Oh. Oh, I've got the power. Okay, there. So a lot of people don't realize that North Carolina ranks in the top 10 in the nation in population size. We're right up there with Texas and California and Florida, but we also rank in the top 10 nationally for age 65-plus. We're number eight out of 10. And these two maps show you in 2021, the dark blue counties are the number of counties that had more people age 60-plus than 17 and under, and projected out to 2041. So this is no surprise, right? The baby boom started in 1946, and we've known it was coming for, you know, 50 years, and here it is. But it's just so dramatically played out here in North Carolina. And we are reaching the point where we have more people age 60-plus than 18 and under. And I want to wave a caution here because so many people think that we want to pit our older adults against our children, and that is not the case at all when it comes to the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature. You know, we would take bullets for our children, right? And they are our future. So the Davie Aging Services Planning Committee, we are not to be confused with the Advisory Board of Davie County Senior Services. We are different from them. We handle the COG money, is the easiest way I know to put it. So we have oversight for about $371,000, $372,000. A lot of it goes to Davie Senior Services, and a little bit of it goes to WIVETI for medical and general transportation. And the county has to, in order to receive these funds, the county has to match it. So thank you, commissioners, because they match about $35,000 a year, 10% of it. And the Home and Community Care Block Grant is this great, big, long name for a grant that provides things like Meals on Wheels, in-home aid, essential, the social determinants of health, if any of you all understand what those are. It services to keep us in our homes as long as possible. Because raise your hand if you want to go to a nursing home. You know, none of us want to end up there. And we're going through that with my mother-in-law. It's very, very expensive. So for a little bit of money, people can have the supports that they need to be able to stay in their homes. We currently have six members out of 11 stated in our bylaws. We meet about seven times a year. And folks, I'm recruiting. If anybody out there would like to be part of our committee, we need you. And commissioners, thank you. Last year, you gave us some recommendations. You gave us a list of folks, and we were successfully recruited some of them. But I need more, because I need 11. And I met the chair at Yadkin last week, up in Booneville, at a WIVETI program. He's got 25 people on his committee. So come on, Davie. Come join me. It's painless. It won't hurt, I promise. Then my other hat is the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature. And could I ask for a show of hands? How many of you have ever heard of the Senior Tar Heel Legislature? Okay. Well, everybody up there. So we were created in 1993. And thank you, commissioners, for acknowledging our 30-year anniversary with your proclamation in February. That was, I really appreciated that. So every county sends a delegate and an alternate. And I consider us, we are like the watchmen on the tower. Our eyes are supposed to be on issues that affect older adults, and we are tasked by the General Assembly to bring to them, every two years, our best recommendations for legislation, you know, to improve the quality of life for older adults. So some of you may remember us from our old logo. This past year, I'm the chair of our public This past year, I'm the Chair of our Public Relations Committee, and we all decided that it was time to upgrade our image a little bit. So, we went through that change, and we've done that here in this county. We know that can be kind of painful. And I want y'all to know, I stand in, in, in a Hall of Fame. Vernon Dull was our Davie County Senior Tar Heel Delegate for many, many, many years, and he was actually the Speaker of the Senior Tar Heels. Ron Hoth, Fred Vore, Dick Wommack, Sandy Winston, and now you've got me. And they have just imposed term limits on us. We can only serve for five years, five terms of two years each. So, why is legislation on behalf of older adults important? The bottom line is because there's so many more of us than there used to be. Some of you have seen population pyramids till you're tired of looking at them, but I have to whip one out every time I'm giving a presentation like this. So, the red bars are 1900, North Carolina in 1900. Each bar is five years of age. So, you know, the single largest group was zero to four years old. And you remember that your grandparents or your great-grandparents, they were one of 12 to 15 siblings, right? So, nowadays, we don't do that. The purple or dark blue bar is projected out to 2030. And you see that the, the single largest group in just a few years is people age 75-plus, the rest of the boomers coming through. So, in 1900, people age 60-plus were about 5% of the total population, and by 2030, more than a quarter of the population is over age 60. So, this brings me to, if you took one of our handouts, these are our five legislative priorities. Looking at that Home and Community Care Block Grant that I was telling you about that funds our senior center, since 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly, the amount of funding into this grant is in the purple bar, and adjusted for inflation, it's actually a 10% increase. The yellow bar is the age 60-plus population in the state, the growth. We've increased by 182%, and the funding has increased by 10%. Now, we're so fortunate in this county because our senior center is maintained by our county. In so many counties, the senior centers are little standalone nonprofits, and so they have to stretch those dollars further and make part of them go to salary. Here, our dollars can go pretty much straight to the programs, and we appreciate you for, for keeping the senior center under your umbrella. So, as you can imagine, the Senior Tar Heel Legislature feels like this situation requires some action, right? On behalf of older adults. So, I put some of our top five priority, legislative priorities, these are our top five legislative priorities, excuse me, for this year. Two weeks ago, we were in Raleigh, and even though we have submitted these priorities to the Journal Assembly via email and other ways, we were present in Raleigh and actually met with our legislators to bring home to them this message that we need more funding. We need the funding for older adults to keep up with the population. And that's our speaker meeting with Senator Ralph Hies. I met with our Senator, and he is not on any of the appropriations committees. So, he kind of felt like, therefore, he didn't have much to do. And I said, but you can vote, right? You can vote in support of legislation. So, we actually got traction for number four to increase the number of ombudsmen. In the interest of time, I am not going to go through all five of these, but I wanted to expose you to the idea that every two years, we distill all the issues and try to bring our best recommendations. So, similar to the Davie County Aging Services Planning Committee, I'm also looking for a volunteer tonight. And we actually have some senior Tar Heels that are county commissioners. The only requirement is you've got to be 60-plus, and you've got to live here in Davie County. We need another representative for Davie County to work with me, and, and I would, I would welcome anyone in this room to, if you're over 60, to consider coming to work with us if you have a heart for advocacy, if you have a heart for older people. We can fill you in any gaps on your experience, so. Thank you. Thank you for your time, and that's my update to you.
Thank you so much for being here. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Brown? Okay. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Easter. Public hearing.
Tonight, I present to you Davie County Zoning Text Amendment 202303. The applicant is Richard Robertson. The request is to rezone approximately 1.04 acres from general industrial, G.I., to residential agriculture. As you can see, the, the property is located at 1, I'm sorry, 2146 Carnetsa Road. The property is further, further described as Davie County Parcel G70000057. Its current zoning is general industrial. The applicant, as I said, is Richard Robertson. The property size is 1.04 acres. The current land use, it's vacant, and they're looking to use it as residential. As you can tell from the property, the surrounding zoning, to the north of the property is some vacant and residential property. It is zoned RA and R20. To the west of the property, it's some vacant property zoned RA. To the south of the property is some residential property zoned general industrial and residential agriculture, and to the east of the property is general industrial. As you can see, kind of sort of around the property, there it is. The proposed zoning is RA. The reason, one of the reasons why he's requested RA rezoning is because there is an existing single-wide mobile home on the property, and if he wants to put a mobile home, a single-wide back on the property, RA zoning district allows for that. The utilities, the site will use public water and private septic. In the Davie County Comprehensive Plan, it identifies the property as commercial. In the Davie County Growth Enhancement Strategy, it is designated as a rural growth area. There are three issues for the board to consider, is to rezone the property, to deny the rezoning, or to defer. I will say, at our March 28th Planning Board meeting, the proposal was adopted unanimously, and no one spoke in opposition of the rezoning request. This time, I'll address any questions this board may have.
Questions?
I'll have a question. There's an existing mobile home on the property?
There was, there was. I'm sorry. No, there's not. No, there was an exist, there was a mobile home on that property at one time.
So, is it eligible for a single-wide mobile home to be placed back on that property?
If it goes to RA zoning, R20 doesn't allow it. There is RA zoning around it, but if he goes for RA zoning, he could put a single-wide mobile home back on the property.
Other questions?
Different. I thought our single-wide mobile home regulations changed a few years ago.
RA is our least restrictive zoning. That is kind of almost our default. The overwhelming majority of the property in the county is zoned RA. R20 does not allow single wides. It allows double wides and modular homes, but RA is the one, there is RA. If you can kind of see, that's not the best, but below that, there's some areas around there. It's kind of mixed down Carnetsa Road. That whole part of the property is all, or is all general industrial. Across the road is R20, and then below it is RA. So, it's kind of mixed throughout the property for residential type zoning.
Is he going to use it as rental property?
I don't know.
Do you know if the septic tank is still operable?
Don't know that either.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, public hearing.
Chairs and House, this is day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to the North Carolina General Statutes 160D, and also Chapter 155 Davie County Ordinance of an Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance Regarding Davie County Tax Parcel G7-57 Located at 2146 Carnetsa Road Consistent of Approximately 1.04 Acres From General Industrial to Residential Agriculture Has Been Due Notice Given Pursuant to the Requirements of the North Carolina General Statutes and Davie County Code and Ordinance By Way of Due Notice Publication in a Newspaper With General Circulation Within Davie County. The Clerk to the Board has attached a copy of the affidavit showing publication in said paper. I would ask anyone who wishes to come and comment at this public hearing, come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as Board Chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing and provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Motion to close the public comment.
So moved.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second? Mr. Renninger, all in favor? Okay. All right. Now, we are, have a motion?
This is going from more intense to less intense, so I have no issues with that. I'll make the motion to approve.
Mr. Renninger makes the motion to approve?
Second.
I'm a show of seconds. Any, any other, any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Easter.
Thank you, Chairman.
And now, we'll go to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Ms. Finney, do I have a second? Show of seconds. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, uplift a hand. Okay. Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you so much. County managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Part of my report tonight, you have in front of you tonight a copy of Recreate Magazine. This is the magazine publication that goes out to all the recreation departments across North Carolina. They did a feature story on Davie County Recreation and Parks Department, so I welcome you all to take a look at that, and if anybody in the audience would like a copy, I'm sure Paul Moore has got a whole truckload of them that he'll be more than happy to give out. Also, last meeting, we unofficially announced the grant for our Canoe Play project at the, at the park, and we have been officially notified that that is good to go, and Mr. Moore is going through the process of getting us that grant so we can start that project. This, during the month of March, Public Utilities was notified for passing all pre-treatment requirements for the calendar year 2022 by the department, by the North Carolina Division of Water Resources. So, we're, we're proud to make sure, we're proud to learn that we hit on everything that we needed to hit on in the pre-treatment process. As part of our consolidated human services, the Davie County Health Department received preliminary notification of a job well done as part of the process of being an accredited health department. We will get official notice here in the next few weeks, but unofficially, there's 161 possible points, and we got 160. So, just want to give everybody at the Health Department a round of applause. That was, that was pretty impressive to see, and we're glad to finally, one last hurdle for the accreditation process. This week, April 3rd, is actually Public Health Week, so it's pretty timely with their review. The Davie Center for Domestic, Davie Center for Violence Prevention recently went through a site monitoring audit process with the North Carolina Council for, for women, and we passed with flying colors. This is a group that awards us four grants each year, and we met all of our requirements, so that keeps us in line for future years to receive grant funding. During the month of March, senior games kicked off. We have 165 registered participants, which is a record for Davie County. So, they go from March through, I believe, May. So, there are plenty of events. If you want to come out and support our seniors, please do so. Senior Services this Friday, despite it being a rainy day, held their Rock-a-Thon fundraiser over at Rescue House. I stopped by and got some donuts. They raised over $15,000 for senior services this past Friday. And the University of Wisconsin's Public Health Institute in a report ranked Davie County as the 21st healthiest county in North Carolina. So, that was, that's, that's an honor for not just the Health Department, but the, they look at a wide assortment of criteria. So, for us to be in that top quarter for the state is pretty impressive. And then finally, I want to thank the Registered Deeds Office and our folks in Adult Protective Services. They hosted me to, to get an inside look at their operations and what they do. So, it was eye-opening, and I think they do wonderful work, and I got to see it firsthand. But that's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Barnett? All right. Any old business? Any new business? Okay, we'll go to Commissioners' comments before we go to a closed session. Mr. Schoeff?
Just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and sharing, trying to do the county's business and talking about it. I was very impressed with the young squadron color guard. It makes you proud that we've got kids like that in the community, and I thought they did a great job, so I'd like to give them some kudos. Thank all the departments. We've got great departments here that do a lot of good work. People don't do it for the money, as evidenced by the JIMS. Proud to share that moment with those workers, and just proud of all of you that used to get to work with you, and proud that you keep the tradition of excellence up in the county. Thank you.
Mr. Renninger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everyone being here. This morning, we had the opportunity to meet with the Extension Office for the Report to the People, and we were reminded how important agriculture is to this county, and, and it was a good meeting, and we need to be reminded of that. And we were, part of their focus is education, and they were sharing that as we get further from a career in society, a lot of people have no idea where food comes from. So, it's something that needs to, we need to be reminded of, so that was a great meeting. We appreciate their hospitality this morning. I would like to congratulate the JIMS Award winners. Those are very deserving, and that's a good program, and, and we got a great staff. I say that about every meeting, but it's true. And I would also, Ms. Brown, I appreciate your report. The, the funding for seniors in North Carolina has got some serious hurdles as we go forward, and so your comments are well taken. And with that, appreciate you being here, and come back next month. Thank you.
Ms. Finney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here tonight. I would like to thank Pastor Wes for the message and prayer that he shared with us at the beginning of the meeting. It was really a great introduction to the Easter week. Congratulations to all of the JIMS recipients and all of the employees who do likewise services each and every day, with or without recognition. We appreciate you so very much. Ms. Julie, I think, has slipped out, but I appreciate her sharing with us about the website. I know she is ecstatic about that, and she works very hard each and every day to bring some enlightenment to mental health issues, and we thank her for that. Allison, thank you for being here with us. And I just hope everyone has a wonderful Easter season, the most important season that there can be. We are just so thankful for our salvation and for the sacrifice that our Lord made for us, and I pray that everyone will have a wonderful Easter, and don't forget the reason for the date. And it's beautiful this time of year, but it's, it's all, it's all about the sacrifice that was made so that we could live here and be blessed, and the best... so that we could live here and be blessed in the best country, in the best county where we could be. And I'll say a little quick congratulations to the sheriff who, congratulations to the sheriff and Robin and Tammy and Philip and Christie and all of the grandparents of the new baby that is here. And all of these grandparents live in Davie County, so they're going to be burning up the road back to see that baby. But that's, that's a good Easter present. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank, thank you, Commissioners. I don't think I can add a whole lot to that. So, other than to say, I hope you all have a blessed Easter, and thank you so much for being here. We are going to go into closed session, and I'm going to read this to let you know why, if you can decipher it. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11, "To consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee." Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schoeff, all in favor? Thank you so much. We're going into closed session now. Thank you so much. Motion to go back into session?
So moved.
Ms. Finney, second? Terry, all in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Terry, second? Vanita, all in favor? We are adjourned.
Thank you.